Do you want this on the dot?
Uh, Greenville City Council Work Session Order, let the record reflect it's four o'clock and we'll go immediately go into executive session, four o'clock. Five o'clock, sorry. Yeah, okay, five o'clock. Okay.
Okay.
Number twenty seven.
Okay, I'll call this regular session of the Greenville City Council to order. Let the record reflect it's 6:05. I'm sorry we're a little late. Thank you for coming. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Collins.
Heavenly Father God, we ask for your blessing on this meeting, Lord, as we consider the issues of the city. God, I pray that you would give us wisdom as we consider these things. Lord, I pray for love for our neighbors and God would just ask for peace among us. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have a proclamation tonight for the retirement. We'd like to build a...
Oh, my Jesus. Well, I'm sleepy.
Need to do this, okay? Forty-five years for our city and yeah, how about that? Amazing, isn't it?
Anyone can water the public? Sewer. Sewer. You've been here a while, yeah. Good gracious.
Whereas Bill Irwin is this...
Yeah.
Hello? Yes, it's okay. Is it okay? Is it picking up? Whereas Bill Irwin began his full-time employment with the city of Greenville on May 19th, 1980 as a sewer plant operator. Bill has had many different titles at the plant throughout his extensive career and was promoted to his current position of wastewater reclamation center superintendent in October of 1990. Whereas Bill Irwin has achieved various state certifications and has achieved his wastewater A license, which is the highest certification among those in the field of wastewater operation, and he also holds an A water treatment license. And Bill Irwin has served as a mentor for many fellow employees along the way, was chosen as the city's of Greenville's Employee of the Year in 2011. And whereas Bill Irwin has served the city council well throughout his extensive career, promoting a spirit of confidence and pride from employees and leadership he has worked alongside. And the city, whereas the city of Greenville wishes to honor you, Bill Irwin, for your distinguished forty-five year service as citizens of the great city of Greenville and its citizens. We now for the city, the city council hereby acknowledges your remarkable career of service and dedication to our city and extend our best wishes for your well-deserved retirement, which will begin March the 21st of 2020. So, thank you and congratulations.
Here, here. I'd like to introduce my wife Rita. Forty-two years and all those years that I slept with a pager or didn't sleep, she didn't complain much. But anyway, yeah, we appreciate it very much. Greenville's been a great blessing to you. So we wish you all the best.
Been grateful. We're gonna miss you. We certainly are. Congratulations. You have a wonderful retirement.
Thank you.
I have one other proclamation, which is just merely a formality. We have a proclamation for Fair Housing Month, and I will mention that merely as a placeholder to meet some of our requirements regarding fair housing. So, I won't read the proclamation tonight. No one is here to present it to, but I want to put it in the record. So I'll place that in the record if you will, please. Call your attention to two placeholders in the agenda, citizens to be heard and public testimony. Citizens are to be heard for items that are not scheduled for public hearing or included on the agenda. Public testimony is for items that are on the agenda. So if you'd like to address the council on any of these issues, please present a citizen's comment card to the city secretary. And are there citizens tonight? There are no citizens. Is there any public testimony? Okay, if you'd like to comment on any of these items, let me know if you come in late. So, we start tonight with ordinances, item 7A, which is consideration and action on an ordinance amending the code of ordinances to allow for boarding and our closure of dangerous, of dangerous open structures and filing a lien to pay for the cost of the closures included. And Daniel Ray. Oh, Daniel's not here. Do you want to brief that? No? Can you ask Daniel to... Well, okay. Okay, so we'll, Daniel's in the conference right now. We'll, we'll move right along. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize. We'll move on to item 8A and come back to 7A. Consideration action on a resolution authorizing a professional services contract with MTG engineers and surveyors related to a 24, 24, 2025 Texas Department of Agriculture revitalization grant. Daniel's here, but Madison.
Good evening. So, earlier this year, we were awarded the TDA Downtown Revitalization Grant. This is just moving forward with our engineering contract with MTG engineers and surveyors.
Are there any questions? If not, thank you very much. And there is no public testimony, so what is the pleasure of the council regarding this item 8A?
A move that we approve?
I'll second that.
Second. Please vote. And that item passes 6-0 with Mr. Cruz absent. Now we'll move back to 7A, consideration action on an ordinance amending the code of ordinances to allow for boarding and our closure of dangerous open structures and filing of lien to pay for the closure of those costs included. Daniel?
All right, if you approve this ordinance as written, what it would do would be to give a new power or a pathway to use an existing power to the code enforcement office. This is meant to address a problem that we've had with the seventy-five or so problem buildings that haven't been redeveloped yet, where absentee owners that live outside the area are not here to see when things are not boarded up and become safety issues. Sometimes those people are difficult to get in touch with. And so the city council has already given the city authority to use the substandard structures board to, to get general authority to board those things up and then that place liens on the properties. The problem is that that's a four to six month process, depending on when those meetings are set up, and it's easy to foil if there's a property owner that doesn't want their building boarded up for some reason, because all they have to do is file a lawsuit to prevent it from moving forward. If this passes in its current form, it would add new language to the code of ordinances to allow the property maintenance specialists at community development to, once they notice an open property that's dangerous, to provide notice, both physically at the property and then by certified mail to the owner of the property, whoever's listed in the county clerk's records as a property owner, and then to, without further notice and without a hearing or coming back for approval from an elected or appointed body, to go ahead and move forward with securing that building, doors and windows, and to keep up with the cost separately and then to immediately file a lien on that property that would have to be paid if the property was sold for all of those amounts, plus the cost of filing the lien, plus 10% interest until it's paid. That would do away with most of the problems that we have right now with open buildings that are constant problems by empowering the city to go ahead and do whatever he sees needs to be done and then effectively taxing the owner with this lien. The fact that it's being done this way makes it, under Texas law, a tax, and so if this passes, it would need to go through a secondary level of publication, and if you pass it tonight and it was, it's published at the next available newspaper, it becomes effective ten days after that publication and then would be added to the city's online code of ordinances to provide notice to anybody with property in the town that that is the law. And then our letter to them would reference that code section. It still could be stopped with a lawsuit, exactly in the same manner as a substandard structures board appeal. The difference is they would have to ask for and receive what's called prior restraint from the district court, so they would have to file a lawsuit, serve the city and get either a temporary restraining order or a temporary injunction, and that means they have to prove why the city is being unreasonable. And we're not going to be doing this just on some property because we have a bone to pick with somebody. We're going to be doing it on properties that are dangerous because kids can go in there and get hurt. And so that will be part of the decision-making process is not doing this when there's a question, but doing it on properties that are obvious dangers. And so I don't believe that anybody will ever be able to meet that standard of proof to prevent the city from doing it. So there's a different pathway to accomplish the same thing, but makes it easier and cheaper for the city and provides a faster pathway to make something happen that we don't currently have.
Is there a timeframe from when the notice is sent to when the boards can go up? Or is it immediate?
No, there's a timeframe, and I left my copy of the ordinance in the other room. I think it's thirty days. Carla, do you have that copy of that ordinance? Or was that the copy that you gave me that I left over in the other room? There is a time period, and it's thirty days from, so the idea would be to mail out and to post the thing on the property on the same day, and whatever the timeframe is, is referenced in that thirty days. Then they'd have thirty days from that day to close it up themselves, or the city could then go at any time over the next three hundred and sixty-five days with that one notice go and board it back up.
Is the thirty days a statutory requirement?
Um, no, it's not a statutory requirement.
Could we go shorter?
We could, and you can make that change tonight. Now, if you do go shorter, it does, you know, raise, it makes it easier for somebody to come back and fight it later saying, you know, they got it in the mail fourteen days after it was mailed, and so it, they only had one day or whatever. And so, I mean, what we're talking about here is never going to cost more than a couple of thousand dollars, and to fight things in court like that costs money in the first place. So there's, there's positives and negatives, but I certainly wouldn't go below ten days because the court would say...
Not enough time for a fair notice.
There's just not enough time, yeah.
I was going to suggest two weeks, but I would be happy with ten days also.
We can change it to say ten days from the date of actual notice, and so once we get the green card back, whatever day it was signed for. The problem is, a lot of property owners who are irresponsible to the point of leaving buildings open in a dangerous way are also irresponsible to the point of never picking up their certified letters.
I would recommend as written.
So I can answer any other questions you may have.
Is there a motion regarding this item? Seven eight.
Make a motion to adopt this.
Sure, second. Please vote. And it passes 6-0.
Mayor, I'm gonna head back across and finish that. I'll be back in a few minutes.
Okay, thank you. We'll need you for item 8E coming up.
Yes.
Okay, can, item 8B, consideration action on a resolution authorizing a communication systems agreement with Parrish Junior College. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is to enter into a radio service agreement with Parrish Junior College for their officer to be on our radio system and us to provide dispatch services to them. It's the same exact agreement that we have with the Greenville Independent School District.
Some sort of big question?
This time. Not always.
Chief, is it just one officer you said?
Yes, sir. They have one officer that he just, he doesn't even have a squad car. He just shows up and he patrols inside the building. But like everything else, it'll probably grow. And this will put them on early. So that way, when they do grow, we'll still have that service agreement in place.
Okay, is there a motion regarding this item?
Second.
Motion second, please vote. Passed a six oh. Sold that one, chief. Okay, resolution eight C, consideration action on a resolution authorizing a performance agreement with Bat Monkey LLC for performance to be held as part of the summer reading program.
Mr. Mayor, council, I didn't name the entity. That's the same, everybody said, that's an interesting name. So this is part of our GMA support program that we're doing through the, with the summer reading program at the library. So we've already had approval to do a concert with Farmer, now I'm blanking on his last name, Dave, or it's a, he does kids program. So we did that before. So this would be for a concert by Jordan Rayner, who was a finalist on The Voice. She was part of our Eclipse programming that we did last year. And this would be to enter into a contract to bring her to the library this summer.
That's pretty simple, too.
He's out there. Yeah, yeah.
He probably misses the appearance opportunity to appear.
I know, right? Don't get him in here. He'll be wanting to take pictures. Here he comes.
If there are no questions, what's the pleasure of the council regarding this item eight C?
Second.
Please vote. And it passes unanimous, or six zero. Item eight D, consideration action on a resolution approving revisions to GUS's low income fund policy and roundup program.
Yes, Mayor, if you'll remember back a couple of years ago and twenty, well, I guess five years ago now, you guys approved a roundup program with Juice. It's an opt-in program. There's some statistics from twenty twenty-four. They've went back and looked at this policy and so they had some recommended revisions that they sent to you guys as council. And since we built together for water, sewer, electric and everything, council also has to approve it. Their board has approved this item. The biggest change policy was under D two, which is documented disabled. So what they wanted to replace the eligibility and recommend was receiving supplemental security income from the Social Security Administration. They actually have to physically prove that they have that instead of just saying that they were documented disabled. So that was the major change that they did. And so it just comes before you guys for approval after those recommended changes and updates. Everything else is the same.
Any questions? Is there a motion regarding this item?
Second.
Please vote. And it passes six zero. Consideration action on a resolution granting conditional support and consent to the creation of a municipal management district by the legislature to be known as Wolf Creek Municipal Management District. Daniel?
All right. This, for members of the public who haven't heard about this yet, what's, what came before the commissioners' court this morning and is in front of the city council now are resolutions to approve, generally approve of language in a bill that will be filed this week. The bill, if you approve it, then basically what you're doing is putting and writing the city council's consent to the creation of a special district. And what you have in front of you is a map, one of the maps that was provided to us by the developer. This process started about six weeks ago when the developer and their attorney met with me and some people from the county, the county judge, and then the commissioner for this area, Steve Harrison, and talked generally about their, their plans for a very large acreage development, which at the time was just over two thousand acres. On the map, that's all sort of between highway thirty-four and highway two twenty-four in pie-shaped area, a pie, slice of pie-shaped area in between Greenville and Commerce. Right now, that, that area is almost completely empty. There are, there's a very, very small number of people who live there. It's mostly farms and then raw acreage that's being farmed. And then you can see on the map, the dark green areas, which are three creek water sheds that run through that area. The idea here is to put together a special district, a municipal management district that would allow the developers to borrow against future tax income to create horizontal infrastructure in the area and to contract with the closest and most able municipal entity for certain services like water, sewer, not really electric, but police and fire and AMR. A lot of those are already set up, you know, in the area just because it's an incorporated part of the county. What they're talking about here is a much higher density development, potentially eight to 10,000 houses in this general area over a twenty-year period or so, plus a lot of what for the area would be considered high-end amenities. But this is part of the reason that this is even a possible development is because of the city's planning over the past few years and spending on water infrastructure development. This is a big enough project that if the city council had not planned for expansion of our water provision, we definitely could not handle. But since we did and because that land has now been bought by, a lot of it has been bought by the developer, the next step would be to put together a district like this. And I know that we've discussed in council MUDs before, this is a very different district in the way that it's formed and the management and the basic, or the basis for the taxation that's then used as a basis to borrow money. Because with an MMD, there's a component of that that is sales tax rather than ad valorem tax only. If you approve, I just spoke with the attorney who's here, Ross Martin in the back, you may recognize him from many other deals that the city has done. Ross and our team of development attorneys have been negotiating certain parts of this for a while now and finalized a copy, which is the same copy that I emailed to the council a couple of hours ago. There are no additional changes from the last changes that the city's attorney, Julie, made to the act. And so if you approve this, a couple of things are going to happen. Number one, the commissioners' court this morning stopped its meeting, basically paused its meeting, is going to reconvene at one o'clock tomorrow with the idea that since this wasn't really final until four o'clock this afternoon, that they wanted the city council to have the first say in this because this, the idea here is that eventually this will be part of the city. And the city, the services that are the, the reason for this district are going to come from the city, not from the county. And so if you pass this tonight, I plan to take it back to the commissioners' court at one, one o'clock tomorrow and have them pass almost exact duplicate copy of a resolution consenting to the formation of the district. And then after that, the developers, attorneys and lobbying team will work with people in Austin to get bills filed in the House and the Senate in the right committees before this upcoming deadline in a few days. And then it will go through the normal legislative process, which I'm definitely not going to describe here. But it is months long and the only thing that's really guaranteed is that it's not going to pass in its current form. There's definitely going to be changes. And what all happens during that process may have an important impact on the underlying rights and obligations, probably won't, because really what you're doing is approving the legislative formation of the district, but the powers that come along with that district formation won't be exercisable until the city approves a secondary agreement, a development agreement, similar to many development agreements that the city has done over the past five or six years. So most of the powers are either already in the statute for things that a municipal management district can do, or they're going to be tailored for this specific area and Greenville's specific, you know, timing of its abilities to provide water, sewer, fire and police, based on how quickly we can generate those abilities. I mean, obviously, we can't provide water and sewer today. There's not even pipes out there. And we don't have the capacity to send a bunch of police and firefighters out there necessarily without impacting the capacity here. But the development agreement would address those things along with all the other non-statutory elements of how this district will work in its formation and taxation usability and borrowing ability. So this is very different from a MUD, which I know has been very politically problematic in the county over the past eight years or so. This one reserves more powers to the city, but it's not, it's not a hundred percent blank check to regulate. That's still subject to the, the state rules regarding this type of district, but it does give a lot more power to the city than a MUD would. So I can answer questions that you've got. And then Ross is here as well. If there's any questions that you guys have about parts of this or, you know, issues related to the project in general.
I think I have a question. If taxes are used to amortize the development of this, which, is that the correct term? I guess I'd say that's, that's kind of the framework of this.
Basically, yes, that's correct.
Then those taxes are pledged to bonds for the development. Then we annex. What happens to the ability to tax at that time?
Well, it depends on what, because there's two different taxes that I think would apply there, ad valorem and sales.
Taxes.
Yeah.
Being used to amortize these bonds that are pledged.
That's right. I mean, if, if those, yeah, I mean, any taxes that are there, when, all of the, the exact mechanics of that and timing that would be part of the development agreement. But the city wouldn't come in and tax on top of that. I mean, it would be planned out for the annexation would occur after whatever income is taken off the top to pay for those bonds. I don't know the full impact of that because I don't know the percentage between ad valorem and sales tax. I know this is a different animal than things that I've dealt with in the past. That's part of the point of this type of district.
Okay, but, okay, suppose the property taxes are pledged for twenty years?
Yeah.
Then that would keep us from annexing.
Well, it depends on what the development agreement says. And I don't know exactly what those timeframes would be. You've done a bunch of these districts, right?
I have. Mayor, council, Ross Martin, Winstead, PC, representing Wolf Creek Management LLC. I've done a lot of these types of districts, both in city and some that have been annexed into cities. You know, generally speaking, the district, if it's in, let's say it's in the ETJ and it issues bonds secured by property taxes. When this, when the city annexes that district, the city then succeeds to that debt. So the city has to be able to pay that debt. So for that reason, we have some cities that don't want to annex until the debt is completely paid off. I think that that, that's probably unrealistic. What we've had, let me give you a case example. I worked on the districts in Castle Hills, which was in Lewisville's ETJ. And that, those districts were annexed into Lewisville by petition of the landowners when Lewisville could amortize the debt with their current tax rate. So, once the debt came down enough that it could be handled by the current tax rate, it came in. So for a lot of like big projects like this, the way that we put in the development agreement is because we can have a higher tax rate in the, in the ETJ without the city's tax rate, you know, we don't need terms money, we can just do it ourselves, we will say that we will be in the ETJ until, until we've issued the bonds to repay the developer. And then at that point on, if, you know, we can plan for the project to be annexed at the, at the request of the city or at the request of the residents. We set up a lot of development agreements like that. So we're out in the ETJ for a little while issuing bonds, you know, using that financial authority. But once the bonds are issued and tax values go up, the rate starts to come way down because you know what your, you know what your debt is. And I anticipate that a district of this size will probably be, will end up being multiple districts. So then the city can take it in chunks. That's, that's what we've seen previously.
Is this amortization included a mix of sales, those property taxes? Is that anticipated or is that something we decide later on?
So usually, most of the horizontal development will be financed by either property taxes or assessments on the property. Sales taxes normally are used to finance either, either separate horizontal development or other types of projects like, you know, the recreational facilities. We've also seen instances where, you know, you can, you can take the sales tax and you can, you know, kind of buy down the debt rather than direct pledge. But it's a very flexible tool. There's lots of, lots of different ways you can use the revenues.
Any other questions?
So there's going to need to be, you know, police and fire. This is going to be a relatively dense development. So it can be, the district can have a contract with the city or any other provider. You know, we certainly already had those conversations, you know, with Daniel and started that discussion of, you know, we know that those emergency services are going to be necessary in the area and we're looking for, you know, a good provider for it. Certainly if, if it's annexed into the city, that would be the city.
But if it was annexed, it might look like a pseudo pilot ring of some kind where we're providing this list of services.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, thank you for coming over tonight.
Oh, you bet. Thank you, guys.
What, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this item?
Move that we approve this resolution.
For second?
Second.
Motion second, please vote. And it passes six zero. I'd like to ask the city secretary to read the consent calendar, please.
City council meeting minutes for February twenty-fifth. Consideration action on a resolution authorizing a change order with Adolphson and Peterson Gulf State. and Peterson Gulf States for $30,275.83 related to the Recreation Center and Reese Davis Expansion Project.
Any questions regarding either of these items? Not, what is the pleasure of the council? Please vote. It passes 6-0. There are no city staff, city council reports denied. Are there any items for discussion or proposed agenda items? Item 11. They're being done, I'll move, you have the boards and commissioners, you have the Parks and Recreation Board meeting minutes from November the 20th of 2024 for you. We are going back into executive session, and we anticipate that we will be voting when we come out of executive session. Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
And I'd like to ask our city attorney to introduce the first item that we're going to consider.
All right, the first item is a contract between landowners. It's left blank so that we can use different landowners. But basically, the council, if you approve this, would be approving the form of a contract between landowners and the Greenville Police Department, which would allow the police department to use structures that are about to be knocked down, substandard structures, for training purposes. This addresses who has liability and who does not, and is a type of contract that, based on the way our charter is written, has to come through the city council before it can be signed. One time. If you approve the form, then it won't have to come back each time.
Okay, any questions? What's the pleasure of the council? Is there a motion?
My motion to approve.
Do we need anything other than that?
Oh yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Was there a second?
Second.
And it passes 6-0. You introduce the second item?
Yes, the second item is a contract between the city of Greenville and Benson Brothers Towing for towing services specifically for unlicensed roll-off trash containers. A couple of years ago, the city entered into an exclusive franchise agreement with Blackjack, and part of Blackjack's profit margin that kept costs low for our citizens was the exclusivity of certain services, including roll-off trash collection. Since that went into place, there've been many people who tried to get around that. And so Greenville adopted a, or approved a sticker-based notice that we put on these roll-off containers whenever they're noticed. And after a certain amount of time, three days basically, then the city has given itself the right to have those containers towed. This contract that's in front of you is a contract with Benson Brothers, who we've confirmed have the right vehicles and the right tow yard to meet safety requirements and state rule requirements about enclosed tow yards, or, they're not called tow yards. The yards where they keep items that they've towed. And so that's in front of you. It's a non-exclusive contract. And so if there are other tow companies that can do that, this contract in its current form wouldn't keep you from entering into agreements with other tow companies as well.
Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion?
I have a motion. I move that the city approve a garbage roll-off towing contract with Benson Brothers Tow Service for removal of unfranchised roll-off containers with the following change at the end of section 4.04. Contractor will also provide owner information to the city at the time of such notice.
With that amendment, is there a motion?
Second. We just need a second.
Second.
Please vote. And that item passes 6-0, and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.